All right, I think we're good.
Okay. Called to order, the regular meeting of the Rialto City Council, calling us back into session. There was nothing to report out of closed session. Roll call, roll is taken in.
Mayor Garnes?
But yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Woodall?
Here.
City Manager Knop?
Here.
Chief of Police Connor?
Here.
Finance Director Dillingham?
Here.
Community Development Director Caldwell? Water Superintendent Jensen?
Here.
Waste Water Superintendent Taylor?
Here.
And City Clerk Gunnar is present, thank you.
Thank you. I think Kyle, do you have before the pledge, you were gonna make it, there was an oral announcement regarding the closed session. Is that just me reporting out?
That was the report.
Nothing to report out, okay, then we are ready. I'll stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Public presentations. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not allowed under the Ralph M. Brown Act. Items requiring council actions not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration if the council directs unless a finding is made by at least two-thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Are there any hands raised or emails?
There are currently no hands raised.
And there are no emails.
Okay, we'll give it a few seconds for a hand to raise just in case. Okay, then we will now move on to the consent calendar. Is there anyone who would like to remove an item from the consent calendar? Council members.
Can I really?
Hearing none.
Three, oh no, I'm gonna say three, sorry.
Okay. Huh, okay, and are there any other? No, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve items one, two, four, five, six, and seven?
So by Johnson.
We have a motion is by Mayor Pro Tim Johnson, is there a second?
Second, Woodall.
We have a motion and a second, roll call please.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodall?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Garnes?
Yes, motion carries five zero. Councilmember Carter?
Yes, I just pulled this because I wanted to give a very sincere thank you to members of the public who volunteer their time to help make our community a better place. And I just brought that out there, so I'm really happy about this committee and I'm glad we've got two public members and congratulations to those two. And thank you so much in advance for your time, and that is it.
Okay, well, I second that wholeheartedly and thank you for doing that, Amanda. Is there a motion then to approve item three?
I will so move.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second by Johnson.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? I actually have to stop myself, I didn't ask if there was anyone from the public who wanted to make a comment about this. Are there any hands raised or emails regarding this?
Are still currently no hands raised.
And there are no emails.
Thank you, then we have a motion, a second, we have five ayes, any nays? We have no nays, hearing none, no abstentions, motion carries five zero. Thank you. Now we will remove, move on to reports and staff communications, City Manager, page thirty-one in your packet.
Thank you, Mayor Garnes and members of the council. We have been working with our city engineer and also with church engineering on setting up some of our 2022 street capital projects. So we will be returning to the council hopefully on September seventh with additional action items related to street infrastructure to help set up those projects for next year in accordance with the, with the multi-year plan that the council has adopted related to street projects. We are also in submission for a bid for the electrical upgrade at City Hall. That will be just changing out the panel to allow for generator connections, solar connections, that sort of thing into the facility. The current power drop is not sufficient for that activity. In addition, some questions have been, been asked about cannabis cultivation water use in Rialto. And so just, just quickly, we can add an agenda item if the council would like at the next meeting. But in 2020, the legal cannabis cultivators utilized approximately half of one percent of total citywide water use. And so based on the upcoming developments that are in process related to the Dinsmore Plateau and also our Humboldt-Rialto Business Park, the total demand anticipated would be about forty-six hundred units of water annually, or about 3.72% of anticipated citywide water usage. With that, I will go ahead and return it to the council to see if there's any questions of staff in the report through page thirty-seven of your packet.
Thank you, thank you, City Manager. Thank you, City Manager. I'll go to council, Councilmember Carter?
I do not have any questions right now.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
I have no questions.
Councilmember Johnson?
No questions.
Council, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson, I apologize. Councilmember Woodall?
Yes, I just have a few things. First off, I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank the Public Works Department. I don't know if I had mentioned this at the last one, being as it's been a while, but they did a wonderful trail off of Davis down to the river and stairs, and they did a really nice job, and I wanted to thank them for that. Also, for Wildwood Days, they had the city looking great. And I appreciate that because we get a lot of people from out of town during that time. And for the police department, fire department said things went really well and they worked real well with the officers. And I was glad to see our officers out and around, and they were visible, which is great too. And then I'd like to thank Sabrina, where I asked her to get some new flags up because the ones were getting pretty bad. And the next day, those new flags were flying, and I wanted to thank her, and that's it.
Thank you. And I just want to add on to, to Councilmember Woodall's comments and to thank city staff for all they did to prepare for Wildwood Days and, and make the city look as, as good as, as, good, it looked great, really. And thank the fire department, those fireworks were, they were amazing. It really gave the city a sense of pride, I think, in, in community. We, we all leave town to go, you know, Fortuna, or Ferndale, or Eureka to see fireworks every year. And to be, and, and we just cross our fingers, and I shouldn't be saying, hoping for illegal fireworks on the Fourth of July. But even this year, it was very quiet, but this fiftieth anniversary celebration of Wildwood Days, it was amazing. They did a beautiful, beautiful job, and I want to thank them from the city. It really gave me an absolute sense of pride watching that, that display. So I just wanted to add on to, to Councilmember Woodall. And any hand, yes.
Oh, I just wanted to add, I just wanted to add one thing to that, what you just said. It was the fire department that raised funds, the firemen that raised funds for the fireworks that we had. It wasn't the fire district, so I want to thank the firemen for taking the time to raise their funds for the fireworks.
Awesome, and thank you for pointing that out, Julie, because that's an important distinction. And so now we will, are there any hands raised or emails regarding the city manager update, staff update? Any questions?
No hands raised.
There are no emails.
Okay, thank you. Then we will move on, thank you very much, City Manager. Now we're at special call items, discussion for sidewalk flag holders, City Manager.
So I think we probably go directly to Councilmember Johnson. The, the item was requested at one of the council's prior meetings. And the council concurred that an item related to flag holders on the southern end of Rialto, Wildwood downtown be agendized for discussion.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Garnes. As you know, the Chamber of Commerce has been very active in putting out flags and getting donations for flags and making our city look really sharp on, on our veterans and, and our, our flag. That said, when, twenty-five years before the city was incorporated back in nineteen forty, the then division of highways had a contract to widen paved Main Street. And, excuse me, at the time, dozens of flag holders were installed in the brand-new sidewalk, that took place in nineteen forty. And since then, why, most of those flag holders have been filled with dirt and rocks and debris. The only one that's conspicuously used is in front of Grunman's Sporting Goods. And a shout out, a big thank you to Grunman's for their patriotism. I talked to Nick Angelo of the Chamber a month ago or so and told him that I would like to get the two dozen or so flag holders cleaned out and put into service, and he was all for it. He thought that would be a great addition to the flags that they're proposing at the north end of town. It would give, give good coverage to the south end of town. So there's my report. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, and to, to, so outside of the report, what, what is the action that you, do we need to do something with regard to that? What you just, the information you just shared with us, or?
I think an endorsement by the council, by the city, to demonstrate to the chamber that we want the flags to continue through the whole Wildwood Avenue stretch, and I, I think that would be sufficient.
Okay, well, I'm on board, and so I'm gonna ask you, Kyle, because there's really no action, action. So he's just asking to provide direction, and then we would return with an action. So I think the action, or I think what we're asking right now is to just agree with Mayor Pro Tim, and then you move from there?
What we can do is bring back correspondence at the next council meeting endorsing the flag holders and encouraging the businesses in downtown to incorporate a flag display, whether that's in the sidewalk or on their, on their building, something like that would.
Be sufficient, okay, well, let me see if there are any other questions. Councilmember Wilson?
I, I think it's a good idea, I don't have any other questions.
Okay.
I look forward to what staff comes back with.
Thank you, Councilmember Woodall?
We would just be endorsing it, we would not be doing anything, the city would not be involved in augering out the holes or anything. I'm, I'm not sure what they're, are, Councilman Johnson, or Mayor Pro Tim Johnson, are you asking the city to auger out the holes and?
No, no, I'm, I, I think I would work with the neck of the chamber and we would get it done.
Oh, oh, then I'm for it.
Okay, um, thank you, Councilmember Carter?
I like it, I agree.
Okay, so we all concur, so we'll hand it back to you, City Manager, and it'll come back on our next meeting. Thank you, thank you, Councilmember, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson. I'm having, hi. Okay, a discussion on police department staffing, page thirty-nine in your packet. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Garnes, members of the council. So at the request of Mayor Pro Tim Johnson and with the consensus of the council, it was requested that an item be placed on the agenda related to police department staffing. And specifically, what was mentioned was the addition of a FTE officer. FTE stands for full-time equivalent position. And with that, I would recommend that we return to Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor Garnes and City Manager Knop. Several months ago, Sergeant Bouchain was injured and was off with injury-related vacation that occurred at home. And it got me to thinking about some of the rough days for our police departments several years ago when we had just the sergeant and the chief on duty for as many hours as they could possibly work, eighty-plus hours a week for each of them. And I am a proponent of having one more officer than we think we need so that officers can take full advantage of vacations, training, court time. And of course, unfortunately, it's a vocation that is beset with way too many injuries. And, you know, it's impossible to plan for them, but I would like to be proactive. And it really, I'd like to hear from Chief Connor as to what his thoughts are and how to keep the department strong and stable. That's all I have, Mayor Garnes.
Thank you, is, um, Chief Connor, are you on?
I am, Mayor Garnes, members of the council. Going forward with the current climate, it's going to be more and more difficult to hire police officers. The average academy in the past has spent between thirty and forty students. The academy that graduated at the beginning of the summer graduated with eleven cadets. The current academy has fourteen, and they're only about a third of the way through. And the vast majority of those candidates have already been hired by other agencies and are being paid to attend the academy. So if we want to keep the police department as healthy as, as we possibly can, I believe the goal, the first goal is to try and keep the officers we have. Police officers become most efficient after they've had at least two years of experience. They've, one of the people in town, they've learned how to do their jobs, they've had some, the experiences they need to develop skills in, in dealing with people. Unfortunately, this is also about the period of the time that they start looking to transfer to other departments where there is better pay and, and more opportunities for advancement. Things we might be able to do to alleviate this, one thing might be longevity pay. I'm already trying to increase the opportunities we have for things. One measure Z option I'm going to consider for the next year is having a part-time officer on the drug task force. In terms of hiring, something that I think the city should consider strongly is rather than trying to pick up the leavings from the other departments and academy graduates is creating a new job position of police officer cadet and hiring somebody before they attend the academy, paying them to go through the academy and then having them come to work afterwards. There is some risk in this, it's a significant expense, and not everyone graduates the academy. And there is no guarantee that they will stay any length of period once they come to work for the city. However, I believe moving forward, this is the city's best opportunity to hire quality candidates. Another thing that we could do is consider pairing hiring bonuses. This is very common in police agencies throughout the state and most of the other larger agencies in Humboldt County already do this. But the goal would be to try and, and hire laterals away from some of those other departments. The city has actually been successful in hiring employees from other cities. And if we could do this in the police department, we would get those officers with a year, or two, or three years of experience, and we wouldn't have to invest in the time that it takes them to become truly efficient. That's about what I have as a prepared statement, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions that the council might have.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Woodall?
Yes, right now, are we having any trouble with giving our officers vacation and training? Are we having a problem with that?
Not currently. Everybody except myself and Conan has had some vacation, at least a week off this summer. I am scheduled for a two-and-a-half-week vacation starting September first. And Conan, or you may know him as Russell, has asked for time off around Christmas. He's only been here since the beginning of the year, and so that seems appropriate. And we will try and get him the time off he's asked for during the holidays. People are still attending training as, as it becomes available, mainly locally, but not all of it. The perishable skills training is still on hold. There were considerable revisions that were required due to the state legislature changing some of the things that needed to be taught as perishable skills. And College of the Redwoods has not yet started to offer those classes. So there will be more, a higher crunch for training when those classes become available. But the one thing you may see is if you look at our budget, is that there is an increase in the use of overtime. And because we are a little pressed for officers to meet especially court and training, we've been using overtime to pay officers to come in when they're not working and cover the city while the officers who would be scheduled to work that day are off on whatever it is that they're required to do.
So, but, okay, do you feel that we need another officer, or do you think we can, I mean, I think our officers are doing a great job as is. Do you think we need another officer? I mean, is it important right now to get another officer, I mean, for the services that we offer the city? Are we lacking in that?
So the, the main advantage to hiring a seventh full-time officer would we, would have full, when, if and when we were fully staffed, we would have full twenty-four-seven coverage. When we were all working currently, we only have a graveyard officer four days a week. And that shift is the first one that gets pulled when, as in this case, John has been hurt for several months. He was the graveyard officer, and he's obviously not working that shift, and we haven't replaced it with anyone else. I believe one of Gordon, her, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson's concerns was that if we have an open position, we can always be looking for hiring somebody going forward. I believe that was one of the rationales for increasing the staffing to six full-time officers. It's hard to argue with that, but I think there's, there's other ways that if the city wanted to spend money on the police department, as I mentioned, I think the primary goal would be to try and keep the officers we have.
So that, okay, then that, as you just said, is your primary goal, is to keep the officers we get, we have?
Correct. We can always use more, though.
Well, we all can use more in everything in the city.
Yes.
Of work, they would be saying so too.
I agree.
Thank you for your answer, I appreciate it.
Is that all, Julie?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor Garnes. Councilmember Woodall asked most, several of the questions I was gonna ask. The, back to the overtime, has that, I mean, is the overtime pay outweighing the price of another officer?
It's my understanding that paying officers overtime is actually cheaper than adding additional full-time officers because of the cost of the benefits for an additional officer. So overtime in the law enforcement business is very, very common as departments are stressed to meet minimum staffing requirements. At the same time, you don't want to burn out your officers with excessive overtime. And I'm a pretty strong believer that officers need their time off to de-stress. So it, it's, I mean, if you look at it purely from finances, it's cheaper to pay overtime. But there is a, a cost on the employees for that.
Are, do you feel that our, our police officers are being overworked? I mean, or, or like falling into that category that you said that with the, the stress?
Not at this point in time, no.
Because I, I mean, you have some good points about longevity. And it, it seems like to me that when we need an officer, if we're, if we're down, that we're always, it seems like you're almost always recruiting. I mean, I, I see the, there becomes a catch-22 saying that we, we've got a full staff and we can't keep recruiting. But I see it in other, other jobs out there that the workforce is definitely shifting, and I see the police force. Law enforcement is not the most popular field to go into at this point because of all of the, the
craziness.
Things that the, that the public has, don't appreciate about law enforcement. So I am, I am concerned about the expense, but I'm also concerned about burning out our officers where we, we went to the extreme with just you and Officer Bouchain being the only two. That, that was extreme and it seems like we've come across that. How is, how is not having the graveyard shift impacting this? Is that a real problem?
So I did a real quick analysis of our calls for service between three in the morning and seven in the morning, which is when we don't have coverage. And in the months of May, June and July, there were twenty-eight calls for service in that time period. But there were only five between the hours of four and six. The majority of them occurred shortly, either shortly after the officer went off duty or shortly before the arriving officer came on duty. And I believe that's indicative of, of either calls being held or officers staying after, working overtime after their shift is over because they had an ongoing investigation and we're still making contacts on it. So I don't know that there is a huge demand in terms of calls for service. The, the un, issue that's, you're not able to measure with metrics is how many crimes would be prevented if there was an officer on patrol between three and seven? And as you may be aware, we have a large number of thefts from unlocked vehicles in the city. Probably in the neighborhood on an average of two to three a week. They usually come in clusters of, of, you know, four or five in a week and then die off for a little while. And we arrested one of the people that we suspect of most of those and he's currently in jail. So the, the numbers have dropped off recently. And it's difficult to say if there was an officer on duty, how it would affect those. But it's pretty logical to assume that they would go down some. How much is a good question.
All right, those, those are all my questions, I think, at this point.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor Garnes. I am just, I'm generally a fan of the idea that retention is the goal, just across the board. And so that's really all I have to say is other than just thank you, Jeff, for your expertise and your opinions and analysis of our current department. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I am, I would need to see numbers and because I do understand the overtime versus the benefited position. But I think that retaining the officers that we have, if there is some kind of mechanism to keep the officers that we have, that that would really benefit the city as well. You know, if, if we go down another officer, I might, you know, want to revisit it and say, okay, for sure, we need to start this. But and for me at this moment, I, I don't see a need to add another officer. That's just, you know, so that's, that's my opinion. Are there any hands raised or emails?
There are currently no hands raised. And I see no emails.
Thank you. So, City Manager, what, what do you need from us tonight?
I think, you know, just discussion from the council. It sounds like, and part of what the council had directed through the prioritization session was, was looking into retention and the employment situation here in the city to make it more tenable on the long, in the long run for employees. And so in our budget process, as the council may recall, there was some additional funding allocated for a human resources professional to come in, work directly with individual employees to work with the bargaining groups and to, you know, present recommendations and advice to the council and to the city manager in order to make appropriate changes to do that. I think Chief Connor is correct. The environment surrounding law enforcement is, is changing rapidly. And we do need to take some form of action. And my advice would be to stick to that plan to look at it holistically across the bargaining units, across all the employees and to bring those recommendations back as soon as possible for the council's consideration.
Thank you, City Manager. Before I go on, Mayor Pro Tem, I did not come back to you, but I need to come back to you to make sure you didn't have anything else you needed to say.
I, I certainly agree with, you know, all that's been said, especially with the city manager's comments that, you know, we, we need to bring in a professional to talk to the bargaining unit groups and see what, see what's really important to them for continued long-term dedicated service to the city of Riedel.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. And I don't know if Sergeant Bouchain is on, if he wanted to say anything, if he was on, because he's the union guy. Is he there?
Currently do not see him on our
Okay. Okay, then I think that, I think, City Manager, you have enough from us?
Yes. Yes.
Awesome. Then we will close this item. Thank you very much. Now we will move on to our final item. And that is the American Rescue Plan Act Funding Recommendations. Page forty in your packet. City Manager, please.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Garnes and members of the council. So back on March 11th of this year, the president signed into law a nearly $1.9 trillion coronavirus relief bill, H R 1319, or otherwise known as the American Rescue Plan. So the law represents just the latest in multiple COVID-19 recovery measures that Congress has passed over the last year. And this established a local coronavirus relief fund, which includes payments directly to cities across the country. And that would include Riedel. So cities above fifty thousand in population receive a direct payment. No cities in Humboldt County over fifty thousand, so we receive it through the state. But we are already starting to collect some of that ARPA relief funding. And we do anticipate to continue to collect it through the end of 2022. The funds do need to be obligated by December 31st, 2024. And the funds must be expended and out the door by December 31st, 2026. So we do have some guidance from the U.S. Treasury in terms of what the ARPA funding can be used for. So in broad terms, because there's very specific ins and outs regarding each of these. But in broad terms, there's, there's four main options for the ARPA relief funds. So one is to respond to the public health emergency or its negative economic impact, including assistance to households, small businesses and nonprofits, or aid to impacted industries such as tourism, travel and hospitality. Second would be to respond to workers performing essential work during the COVID-19 public health emergency by providing premium pay to eligible workers. Number three would be the provision of government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue due to the COVID-19 public health emergency. So for Riedel, unless there's an update on this, we did not receive a reduction in revenue related to COVID-19. And then number four, to make necessary investments in water, sewer or broadband infrastructure. So the total amount of funding that the city of Riedel is expected to receive is a little over $800,000 in total ARPA funds. So those funds could be used towards those four main purposes. And there, there's a, a pretty thick document that provides some ins and outs for each, each of them. It's a little bit more complicated. And definitely would, any, any project we pursue, we would, we would have to be double checking with U.S. Treasury to make sure that it's eligible. So staff has developed some recommendations just based on prior council direction priorities and the condition of the, of the city. So we've outlined three recommendations. There's certainly no obligation of the council to, to take, to take the recommendations. But the city of Riedel also plays an important role in public health in terms of, in particular wastewater. And we do have, you know, some pretty significant capital needs related to, to the wastewater system, in particular, the collection system. So the city has a very advanced treatment facility, but our collection system has some significant deficits associated with it that are time intensive, that potentially lead to fines and penalties if they're not corrected. And that's mostly, that's associated with sanitary sewer overflows, which when we get tremendous rain events, the system unfortunately has a bottleneck right towards the, towards the plant that is unable to absorb and convey all of the wastewater into the plant. And so we are now regularly seeing sanitary sewer overflows. And we are working right now on a sanitary sewer evaluation study to get a better handle on the collection system and where the most appropriate investments that could be made into the system are located. One of the earlier proposals that has been now funded through the SSES is the Painter Street upsizing for that bottleneck into the wastewater treatment plant. The estimated cost of the Painter Street upsizing, Painter Street upsizing is a line that goes from the bottom of Painter Street about a quarter of a mile into the wastewater treatment plant. So the cost of that is roughly $1.2 million in $2018, I believe. So that, you know, project is, is a significant outlay of capital funds that the current wastewater fund, capital fund does not have the resources to pay for that alone. So we would need grant funding or potentially this American Rescue funding to help bridge the gap and make it a little bit closer to becoming a reality. So it was recommended that this be kind of the primary focus of where to utilize the ARPA funds. So eighty percent of the available ARPA funds are roughly $641,000. That would be earmarked towards the Painter Street upsizing. And then obviously, we still have another $600,000 to, to come up with to make that project a reality. Recommendation number two would be to try to allocate some financial resources to the economic betterment of the community in the long run. So the council recently adopted an immediate action plan related to economic development. And one of the priorities listed in the immediate action plan calls for recreational assets for the city, specifically an open space facility. So this facility would be available for use of any interested member of the public to hold festivals, car shows, farmers markets, events for Wildwood Days or other similar events in a open-air pedestrian safe environment that minimizes the traffic impact of onto Wildwood Avenue. So the, and we did look into this, the, such a facility would be allowed under the ARPA guidelines from U.S. Treasury. And that asset could be utilized again by any member of the community or anybody wishing to throw an event. That would certainly be a benefit to the downtown and the entire Wildwood commercial core of, of the community. On the very last page of your packet, and unfortunately I cannot display this on the screen at the moment, but on the very last page of your packet, if you fold it out, is a schematic of a potential design of what exactly this type of facility will be, which is essentially just creating some changes, minor modifications to Wildwood Avenue in front of City Hall, including the creation of traffic control bollards. That would be easy to be set up by any volunteer staff wishing to throw an event. And some other potential fun modifications, including an open-air gazebo and other, you know, types of facilities to allow for bands or, or other types of festival-type activities in this area. And the benefit of it is that West Davis Street and then Side Street could remain open, allowing bus traffic, truck traffic, regular vehicular traffic, an easy, an easy way to get around the event center and continue with normal operations. Relatively probably low, low-cost changes, even just simply installing the bollards would, would effectively create this event space for the community. But certainly some additional, you know, sidewalk work, some modifications to Memorial Park, modifications to lawn at City Hall, including potentially gazebo or other types of, of structures could be incorporated into the plan. So again, that's on page forty-three of your packet. And that is really just very conceptual drawing of what potentially could be there. So that's the recommendation number two to provide some funding to move that particular project forward. Again, as tied into the council's economic development action plan. Number three recommendation is just a practical matter of setting aside two and a half percent of the funding through the 2026 spending period for kind of the miscellaneous cost expenses. Obviously, we didn't anticipate really being, returning to Zoom just a month ago, but here we are. And so we're in a situation that continues to be dynamic. And so having a small amount of funding, relatively speaking, $20,000 set aside for other unbilled expenses. For example, our hybrid chamber setup, which we did, we were able to do for relatively low cost, but that currently remains unreimbursed through any COVID funds. That could be used to reimburse those types of expenses or future deployments of hand-washing stations or that sort of thing. So with that, I will go ahead and return it back to the mayor to see if there's any questions or comments to staff.
Thank you, City Manager. Council, I will come and ask you if you have questions. Councilmember Carter?
I'm first a lot tonight. I really like this breakdown. I am happy to see a chunk of that going to the Painter Street issue. That is something that when we see heavy rains in the winter, it haunts me. I, it just, it really bothers me. I would love to see that, something that we could fix. And if we could use COVID relief funds partly for that, great. I also really like the outdoor, you know, event space. I think that's amazing. It'd be a wonderful thing even down the line. But if nothing else, I think COVID has really taught us the importance of outdoor event space. And, you know, so we can still hold, anyway, things outside are safer sometimes. So all in all, no, no questions. I really like I really like this breakdown. It sits well with me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor Garance. The only question I have is related to the Painter Street bypass to get all of the sewage to the plant. Go down to the river. This question for the City Manager is, is there a timeline whereby we could do this, you know, in advance of the sewer evaluation study being completed? Because I think everybody realizes that it is a crunch point. And, you know, is that acceptable with, according to the act that we're talking about?
So I think that's a great question, Mayor Protim. Because we kind of have two things going on with the SSES. It may be that the sanitary sewer evaluation study identifies very inexpensive or efficient methods to deal with the INI situation in specific areas of town that then negates the need for the upsizing. So that is possible. We did have this conversation with the GHD because the timeline of the grant, we would not need to obligate until 2024, and we should have the results back prior to the results of the sanitary sewer evaluation study prior to that time. We would then, you know, return to the council with, you know, identifying the most efficient method of handling the INI situation. So it could be the upsizing, which we, we know is a solution that will solve the problem, but is it the most efficient method of solving the problem? I think that's a question that can only be answered by the completed SSES. And I think that there's enough of a timeline here for us to be able to determine that.
Okay, thank you. That was my only question, Mayor Garance.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Councilmember Woodall?
Yes, a couple of questions on the Painter Street. You said afterwards, we might have to do grants, loan. When you mentioned the rescue funding, that's a loan, right?
No, so this rescue funding is a direct allocation, and we've actually already received, I think, close to half of the total amount. However, it, you know, we are given guidelines in terms of appropriate expenditures of those funds. So we just have to be compliant with the law. Otherwise, otherwise the city would end up paying for whatever project is identified under the ARPA project. And as far as we know, looking at all of this, these are, you know, whether it's the plaza concept or the event space concept or Painter Street upsizing, those would be eligible projects.
Oh, okay. I thought there was something else, because when we were talking about how we would pay for the extra on that project, you said grants, loan, or the rescue fund. Oh, this is the rescue funding. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so we will have to make up a pretty significant difference. It's a little bit closer to the amount that we have in the capital fund for sewer projects. But obviously, we want to try to leverage other grant funding to try to pay for the project so that our ratepayers aren't having to pay for these modifications. So we'll be looking certainly for the most efficient method of dealing with the problem. But it does need to be dealt with.
Okay, so now when you say the funds have to be obligated before December 2024, can they, can we use those funds before that date?
Yes.
I mean, or just that that date it has to be obligated?
No, we can, we can, there's no, that's the end cap date, so we can use them immediately, provided, provided we're within the eligibility criteria.
Okay. Now, the last question is, I like all of these really well, but let's say before we start any of them, something comes up, would we be able to amend the amounts? Let's say that something came up with water, would we be able to amend some amounts and revisit the amounts we put to each one of these funds if something, before they were actually, would we be able to revisit?
Absolutely. So the term we're using here is earmark. So we're just simply establishing a plan, a council approved plan to move forward in trying to develop these projects and get them towards fruition. So, so at any time prior to a contractual commitment, the funds can be reassigned so long as they're within the eligibility and not past that end cap date of 2024.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Woodall. Councilmember Wilson?
All of the three items look like great ideas. I'm kind of along the idea that we, we're not, doesn't appear that we're really crunched for time. The, this coronavirus thing hasn't, I don't think we've seen the end of it. So how that affects our, like the ability to have the meetings, the Zoom hybrid meetings, I think, I think that number, there could be more money spent there. The idea of doing, seeing the study done on the INI needs to be further along before we actually commit to that. But as City Manager just said, we, if we haven't entered into a contractual agreement, we can always shift our priorities. So I think the term earmark is a good, is a good comment, or a good phrase to use towards doing stuff. And there may be some ideas that come up for the economic development as we move forward with that, that we could use this for the tourism and using that. So I'm okay with the concept. I'm a little, this is a comment, I'm a little fascinated how the government, they're able to, they're putting out a lot of money for a lot of things. And I am concerned on a, on a national level, how our nation's going to pay for the trillions and trillions of dollars that are being talked about to be spent. Riedel will benefit. So yay, you know, grab it, Riedel. So let's move forward. I think we've got, we're started in a good direction. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think I agree with everyone that it's a, it's a great plan. I'm excited about, I'm excited about the ability to actually earmark money for anything. And so to be able to earmark money for like a water system or a collection system that is so very important to the city as a whole and the economic development situation, I think that, I think the whole plan is really good. And I think the fact that we can actually shift our position if need be, that gives us a lot of latitude. And so I think that this, from my perspective, is a go because it's a plan. And, you know, you can't get anywhere if you don't start out with a plan, you have to take first step. So I think this is a very good first step. Thank you, City Manager and staff that put this all together. It is appreciated. Are there any hands raised or emails? Are there any hands raised or emails?
There are currently no hands raised.
And I see no emails.
Okay, then. Well, I think, let me find my piece of paper, that there was no, yes, we want to approve it. So is there a motion to approve the American Rescue Plan Act funding recommendations?
I'll make that motion, Carter.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second by Johnson.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodall?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Garance?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Thank you very much. And now we are on to council reports and communications. I will start, Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mayor Garance. I have a couple items. The first is, back on July 21st, just a day or two after our last meeting, the local LAFCO met and approved Riedel's annexation request for the sewer disposal field. And as they often do with annexation requests, they, where roads are going to be changing from one jurisdiction to another, they will often want a road maintenance agreement. And in this case, it would be subject to a road maintenance agreement for, I don't know, approximately 1,000 feet of the road that fronts the sewer, the city's property. And I would recommend that we not enter into an agreement with the county that we send it back to LAFCO and with appropriate reasons why we don't think that, you know, as a single property owner out there, that when you compare us to the 20-plus other property owners, that we should bear that price, that cost. The second item was, yesterday we had a Zoom meeting for Last Chance Grade stakeholders and really didn't move the ball forward a whole lot. I think there'll be another meeting this fall, September, October sometime. And, you know, hopefully at that time, we'll, we'll see some information coming back from all of the studies that the state has done. Just kind of as an update, this fall, they plan to do one more feel boring out there. And as I've reported before, there's two options or alternates are on the table. One is a tunnel and the other is more conventional road that would be uphill from the current alignment with major, major stability items to try to keep it in place. As far as timeline, I think we're looking at a fall draft environmental, fall, that is 2023, a draft environmental document, a final environmental document two years later, and construction beginning in 2030. We should all live so long. That's all I have, Mayor Garance.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Councilmember Woodall?
Okay, I went to the fire department meeting and I'll, this last month, we had, they had 49 calls, which is down quite a bit. I will read them. Medical aid 26, public assist 3, are we fire debris 3, hazard conditions 3, traffic collisions 4, meeting and drills 3, and work detail 1, and that's for that meeting. And I was wondering if we could have our ad hoc committee meeting and with Mayor Protim Johnson and I about the school, if maybe we could schedule one soon. And the last thing is, we have a nuisance abatement committee meeting tomorrow. If anybody in the community would like to call in, they can call City Hall and they'll give them the phone numbers, the meeting's at 3 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Woodall. Councilmember Wilson?
Nothing too much to report, just saying it is not, actually, HWA, it's more of the Hambrill people up in Crescent City have decided to move ahead and secure a place to do the CRV recycling. So it's, it's more on their own movement, the way I understood it. But that is a positive direction that there is, it's moving towards a local CRV redemption center. So that's good. The, I don't know what, what's really going on otherwise with CRV. I think, I don't know, people have just given up and start, or pile it up in their backyard or put it in the recycle bin. But the, but it is positive movement, I think, locally. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor Garance. I really don't have much to report this time either. Nuisance committee tomorrow. And I really just wanted to reiterate how great Wildwood Days was, especially those fireworks, so impressive. And for once, my friends from Fortuna had to come to Riedel to see the fireworks, and everybody was very impressed, and it was lovely. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. We had our third Redwood Empire Division meeting on Friday. It was a Zoom meeting, it was supposed to be in Eureka, and in the last minute after the mask mandate, universal mask mandate happened in Humboldt County, and Humboldt County's numbers, the decision was made to go back to Zoom and not, or not go back to Zoom, to actually stay with Zoom and not have an in-person meeting. Because people would be coming from a lot of different areas, and we just wanted everybody to be safe, and so that was the decision. We had, there was, we had discussions about different bills. It's my last, no, it's my second to last meeting as president of the Redwood Empire Division. We will, we did a vote, we'll install the officers in September at the annual conference or during the annual conference. And the person that I think most people would know here, Tammy Trent, she will, councilwoman from Fortuna, will be moving into the first vice president position. And so that's pretty much that news. And I think that's all. I do want to, I was, I was out of town, I missed a couple of meetings, I had some things I had to deal with. And since I've been back, I've not contacted my dear, dear friend Nancy Kurtz. So I just want to say hi, Nancy Kurtz, because I know she's watching, and I love you. Anyway, you guys, is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move by Johnson.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second, Carter.
We have a motion and a second. We will adjourn until the 7th of September. Take care, everyone. Meeting adjourned.